Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Great. Next, I'll report from our closed session. On a five to nothing vote, the school committee voted to deny grievance of an 1137 employee. And also, on a five to nothing vote, the committee decided to move forward on arbitration regarding an 1137 employee. I'd ask all of you to join with me in a moment of silence as we continue to think about gaining some peace in our nation. And we'll also think about all those folks who are still suffering from COVID-19. I'll recite the pledge, and you can follow along with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mr. Notorianni, do we have any folks that want to speak in good welfare?
Chairman.
No. Okay. Back to McGee. I'll turn it over to you for recognitions and announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have two announcements to make. The first announcement is that the district is, or has started, the process of establishing summer enrichment programs for students in grades K through 12, pre-K through 12, in our district. We're also working on the traditional summer school options that we have for our secondary students, those who are in grades six through 12. This time around, the summer programming is going to look very different than it has in years past, as you're aware and the committee is aware. We have quite a bit of ESER III funds from the government that we are going to be using to support these summer enrichment programs for our students. We have started the process of also partnering with the community organizations that we've collaborated with over many years here in the city, such as CCF, CCA, Kids Club, the YMCA, the YWCA, Neighbor Works, Rivers Edge, and Boys and Girls Club, just to name a few. So we're really excited about the process that we're going to be undertaking to provide those resources that are, you know, academic naturally for all of our students, physical types of activities as well, and our social-emotional supports that we're going to provide our students beginning this summer. This is something that's going to be repeated the next summer as well, and even, I think, the third summer, two summers from now, we're going to be utilizing those ESER III funds for those types of programs for our students. Specifically, the dates that we've established so far at the elementary, middle school, and high school levels will be running from July 6th through August 13th. That's specifically at the elementary level, and it'll be Mondays through Fridays, 8:00 to 12:00 each day. So in the morning, we're going to have Windsocket Education Department academic-type programs and social-emotional programs. And in the afternoon, that's where we'll be partnering with our community partners in providing those, you know, different types of opportunities and activities for our students. At the middle school and at the high school, July 6th through July 30th is when we're going to be providing the traditional summer school credit recovery opportunities for those students. And then, beginning on August 2nd through August 13th, so the last two weeks of the summer programming at the middle and high school will be surrounding the enrichment-type opportunities that we're going to be providing, you know, beyond just the credit recovery. So we've been working really hard. We've had a couple of meetings with our community partners around what it could look like in that partnership and that collaboration. We're scheduled to meet with them again next week to talk a little bit more around the logistics and, you know, what it's going to look like. We're also going to be providing site-based opportunities for our students. So in the past, we have had just a couple of sites that we've utilized. Typically, it's been Harris Elementary for the students in grades K through 5 for their, you know, their summer support. This time around, because we're finding that we're having many more, which we're very excited about, teachers and staff that are applying, that have applied to teach the summer enrichment programs, especially at the elementary level. So we're going to be looking to have each of the schools supporting their students with their summer enrichment programming. So again, that's something that we haven't been able to do in the past, and it's really exciting because it's going to provide opportunities for those students to potentially be working with their teachers that they worked with this year. So again, that's something that we have started, and we're going to be continuing that process. I'll be reporting out as we get more information, as we get more details and logistics for the summer enrichment programs. And the second announcement is, next week is Teacher Appreciation Week. I know we don't have a school committee meeting, or a regularly scheduled school committee meeting next week. So I just wanted to make that announcement to, you know, let everybody in the community, all of our families know, you know, to remind them to reach out to their child's teacher or teachers, and let them know really how much they appreciate, you know, their hard work, commitment, and dedication to all of our students. And with that, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. I have just one question regarding the programs addressing learning loss and emotional issues. Are we coordinating with RIDE to see what they're recommending, or, you know, that, so how we're fitting in so that once the funds come in, we will be well on our way to be using the funds for the ESER, you know, the ESER funds for those programs? So that we don't want to do programs and, oh, these don't count. That'd be the last thing we want.
So we are. Dr. Holt, I know, and Mrs. DiRiso, and Ms. Agia, and Mrs. Morell, and Dr. Sullivan have been working with RIDE around what RIDE is looking to offer districts to take advantage of beyond just what districts are creating and establishing themselves. In fact, I was talking to Dr. Holt about that just this afternoon, and we're actually looking at what RIDE is sort of putting together. We're ahead of the game here in Windsocket. We've really started the process, and, you know, we're farther ahead than RIDE is at this point in time. But, you know, anything, any supports that RIDE can provide to us, you know, that we think is valuable, we'll certainly utilize.
That's pretty much with the meeting I had with the commissioner and the directors this week with the other school committee chairs in the state. That's what she was talking about, rolling out programs. But I wanted to make sure that we've got coordination with them. So, you know, two ships are not passing in the night, and we miss the boat, and they miss what we're doing. So that's important. Anyone else have any questions or comments for Dr. McGee?
If I could add one more thing, Chairman. Dr. Sullivan and Mrs. Morell are going to be focusing on this a little bit later in the meeting during their special education report. The ESY for students that we traditionally provide for our students with special needs.
What is ESY, Dr. McGee?
Extended School Year.
Okay.
Is the acronym, is the term. So they're going to be talking in a little greater detail about that. But that is going to continue, and we're actually, I don't want to steal any of their thunder, but we're actually adding to the ESY this summer. So I won't say anymore.
Okay.
I'll leave the rest to you and Don.
Any comments, other questions for Dr. McGee? Then I'll make a motion to receive the place on file, the recognitions and announcements. We have a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclerc and Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee will call, please.
Chairman Borje.
Sorry. It's a voice. I just didn't hear right.
Okay.
Thank you. Yes, I say yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
She's not on the list anymore.
Mrs. Costa.
She's left the meeting.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Thank you. Next, I'll make a motion to approve the April 14, 2021 Open Minutes, Open Session Minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclerc. Dr. McGee, any changes? And Vice Chair Burke, any changes, additions, deletions to the minutes? Hearing none, Dr. McGee?
No.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, we'll move on to the consent agenda. I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Does any school committee member want to take any items out of order, or want to discuss any particular items within the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Mr. Leclerc.
Mr. Perrier, where did you get that word? Brad. Relative to the purchases, there's one.
Perrier.
Perrier, alright. There's two purchases on there for the Catholic Regional School. Is that like a piggyback type of situation where they piggyback one of our contracts, and they just reimburse them for it?
That's actually ESER funds. What happened there is Good Shepherd made the purchase, and we're reimbursing them through our ESER dollars. We're allowed to do that with RIDE. RIDE has a certain paperwork that Good Shepherd needs to fill out in order to say that they followed their purchasing procedures. They fill that paperwork out, return it to me, then they send me a copy of the cleared check and the invoice that they're paying, and we turn and reimburse them.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Anyone else? Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Dr. McGee will call.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Let's see, we have no communication, so I'll turn it over to you, Dr. McGee, for your superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I have three items under my report. The first is personnel. We hired a second shift custodian for Windsocket High School recently, and we also have six folks who are going to be doing, or who have been doing, the binax testing for our student athletes. As you're aware, a few weeks ago, or a few meetings ago, I discussed the process that our athletes are tested on Mondays to ensure that they're, you know, they're negative. They test negative while they practice and compete in their particular games. So we have six stipend positions for six, primarily they're nurses, but there are other staff members who are conducting that testing on Mondays after school. Second agenda item is the end-of-year events update. The planning is in process from our elementaries, to our middle schools, to our high school with respect to the end-of-year events. So I've had conversations with the administrators over the last few weeks, and they're continuing to work with those who have subcommittees that are working on some of the plans, such as the high school. One item is that there's an updated spring events guideline that will be coming out through RIDE soon. I had a Superintendent's Association meeting earlier this week, and RIDE indicated that they're going to be sending out that updated spring events guideline soon. So I anticipate that hopefully we'll get it this week, certainly early next week. And once that is shared with me, I will share that with each of the principals and administrators who are working on those end-of-year events. The second part of the end-of-year events update is, yesterday I had a meeting with Fire Chief Chatra and some fire personnel from North Smithfield, and the city of Windsocket is going to be offering COVID-19 vaccinations next week. The dates have yet to be determined, but they're offering them to students in the district who are 16 and older. And they're also being offered to any adult in the city, in the community, that did not receive a vaccine, but, you know, would wish to receive one. It appears as though the location's going to be the same as it has been at Our Lady Queen of Martyrs. And again, I sent out a survey to our families and to our staff this afternoon to see if, you know, they might be interested. If they're not interested, they do not need to complete the survey. The survey is just to give us a rough number of those students and families who would wish to take advantage of the vaccine, and that way I can get that information to Chief Chatra, so they would be able to establish, you know, an estimated number of doses that they would need. And my third agenda item is the contract negotiations with the Teachers Guild. We've had a couple of meetings since we met last time, one on the 12th and one on the 15th, and we have two meetings scheduled for May 6th and May 11th. And, you know, those negotiations are moving along pretty well. So, you know, again, we hope to come to an agreement sooner rather than later. And with that, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. Just a couple of things regarding the vaccinations. Did the chief give you any ideas to the maximum amount of shots that they have available at this point?
Yeah, they did not. It sounded like they, it sounded like there really wasn't a number that, you know, we couldn't exceed. So I think they're just looking to see the number that we would request, and it sounds like they can beat that number.
Sounds like supply exceeds demand at this point, right?
Certainly does. Yeah, and we would be combined with North Smithfield as well, as we were in the past.
The only thing, I just wanted to mention that not only do we have negotiation meetings on May 6th and 11th, but I also believe we have the 17th, the 18th, and the 25th of May. I think those dates we established the last time. So May is chock full of meetings. I think we have five meetings in May. Anyone have any comments, questions for Dr. McGee? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the superintendent's report. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, we'll go on to the school committee reports. Just want to say that the curriculum subcommittee meeting has been moved to May 11th, and so we will have the meeting then, and then we'll report at the next meeting. So we'll go on to the technology subcommittee update. I'll turn it to you, Vice Chair Burke, and this is Costa.
Can you hear me?
Right now, yes.
Can anybody, you hear me right now? Well, okay. The technology committee met yesterday, last night, and I shall turn it over to Mr. Notorianni. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Burke. So we met last evening, and we talked about internet services in the district, and how we're cutting over to a new internet service provider come July 1st. We also talked about the GoGuardian application, which is an internet service-based system that helps our teachers and faculty and staff monitor students. And we discussed availability of allowing that service for parents as well. And at the present time, we're waiting for a privacy contract to be signed. We're trying to hash out the details so that we can move forward with that. We then talked about cutting over the telephone system on July 1st to a new telephone company, which is going to represent some savings for the district. We discussed social media in the district. There's an existing policy, and it's going to be reviewed by the policy subcommittee in May. And we were proposing to create social media platforms for each individual school. They'll be able to manage them centrally, and we'll conform to the policy that the district has in place, or future policy. We talked about the registration system and the new electronic system, and how that's going to work. And we concluded with the count, we were at 57 work orders as of last evening. That summarizes the subcommittee meeting from tomorrow, last night.
Thank you, Mr. Notorianni. Any comments, questions for Mr. Notorianni, or Vice Chair Burke, or Mrs. Costa? Then I'll make a motion to receive, place on file, the technology subcommittee update. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke. Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Now I'll ask Mr. Perrier to give us his financial update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Front of the school committee this evening is the March 2021 fiscal update. Currently, the school department is projected to have a $116,000 surplus as of June 30th, 2021. On the revenue side, taxes levied from local government units projects to be $250,000 under budget. The additional 250K in funding was what was asked for by the city and was not approved, and it's being funded at our fiscal year 20 level. I've also made some adjustments to the Medicaid reimbursement projection, as that has been slightly decreased over the prior month based on actual yearly trends. On the expenditure side, all regular salaries are projected to be 1.2 million under budget at this time, netted with the employee turnover allowance of 854,000. This will put salaries overall $361,000 under budget. The district has recently received another allocation of ESER I funds. This is the ESER set aside. This has led to an additional $400,000 in savings on salaries. And we will continue to have our savings as we advance to the end of the fiscal year with our remaining unfilled positions. The substitute salaries line is currently projected to be $486,000 under budget. The savings has decreased by $102,000 over the prior month's projection. We've had some success in securing substitutes over the last month, so we have increased the projected expenses for the year. Regular overtime is projected to be $522,000 over budget. This was due to the period that we were paying double time for 1137 employees, and as noted in prior updates, the normal overtime rules now are in effect district-wide. Medical expenses are currently $459,000 over budget. This has been an increase of 103K over the last month's projection. Weekly billings have certainly returned to normal. And as a set aside to that, because medical expenses have been on the rise, coupled with the additional money received through ESER I to support salaries, on this latest fiscal update, $200,000 has been reserved for OPEB expense. We're still leaving a $200,000 surplus on that line. When we get closer to closing out the fiscal year, at that point, I will bring to the school committee a vote on a final amount to be transferred into the OPEB trust account. Right now, that $200,000 is just a placeholder for this fiscal update, and as we get closer to the end of the year, there will be an official presentation given to the school committee, and a vote will be taken to make that transfer. Finally, we added 164K in funds to our transportation expense line. This is due to statewide transportation increasing pretty significantly last month, and this again was due to, since returning to in-person learning, we have seen an increase in our statewide transportation bill. At this time, I will be happy to answer any questions from the school committee.
Not so much a question regarding the presentation, Mr. Perrier, but sooner, very soon, we're going to be issuing a preliminary budget to the city after the school committee votes and approves the preliminary budget, because obviously, there's going to be some items that we're still going to be waiting to finalize. Notably, we've got, we're in, you know, negotiations with Teachers Guild, where we also got to be taking a look at what the medical expenses are really going to end up being, et cetera, and so many other things. And I believe we've got a special, just to mention, we have a special committee meeting on May 5th. We should be getting the budget much sooner than that, so that we all can look at it. But that's going to be, hopefully, the evening that we approve the budget, because it has, the city begins its budget process on the 12th of May, and they need our budget to be able to do theirs. Because then, once the mayor finishes up with the city budget, then it goes to the city council. So that's the process that's going to be taking place over the next couple of weeks. Anyone have any comments for Mr. Perrier? So obviously, once we finalize, there will be some changes, there'll be some, quite a few changes, once we finalize both the revenues and the expenditures to give us the final look. And we will do that in short order, once we have all the numbers.
And, Mr. Chairman, just to mention one other thing, there will be some additional changes to fiscal year 22 budget, once we get a better handle on what we're going to be doing with our ESER funds as well. So right now, just to kind of let, give everybody a bit of a sneak preview, we will be billing, building the budget with that stuff in mind. And as we get more information on ESER, we'll be removing things from the general fund and offloading it to the ESER accounts going forward.
Correct. And that, and, you know, speaking to the commissioner this week, I mean, even though they've got, quote, "a plan," things have not been finalized from providence. So there's a lot to be done from their end before they give us guidance as to what's going to happen with those funds. Any comments, questions for Mr. Perrier? Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on file a financial update. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee will call, please.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke. Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, we'll go in, I'll ask Dr. Sullivan and/or Ms. Morell to give us the special education update.
Mr. Chairman.
What is that? What is that noise? Okay, go on. All right. Ms. Morell, thank you.
Thank you. I'm not sure if Dr. Sullivan is on, but I will update, and if she jumps on, she can add to it. Dr. McGee had alluded to our extended school year program, the ESY, that we will be holding this summer. The ESY program is usually for students who regress or are at a critical point in their education and need a continuation of the school year. We have extended the hours for the extended school year program. Usually, we do three days a week, three hours a day for five weeks. This year, we are extending it for four hours a day. We're keeping the three days a week, but we're going for six weeks. And then, after the program ends, if they, if the students will be able to attend the summer programming afterwards, that will be in that building. So the dates would be July 6th through August 12th, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. Hours for the elementary and preschool would be from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM, and the hours for the secondary would be 7:30 AM to 11:30 PM. We are also providing individual program for students as available to help some of our students adjust back into the school system, into the school day that have been out due to COVID, to help acclimate them back into the building. Also, our dynamic learning map testing, the DLM, the testing for students that are on alternate assessment, has started, and students, teachers and students have been completing the testing over the last few weeks. Students that are distance learning are being asked to come in to complete the testing, and both, all COVID protocols would be followed to keep both staff and students safe, and so far, things have been going well. That's what I have to report.
Mrs. Kapiskas, great. I know we had talked about maybe getting additional, some numbers, some stats. Would you enumerate some of the things we'd like to see in the special education update on a monthly basis?
Sure. Ms. Morell and Dr. Sullivan, I don't think is on, but Mr. Borje and I were talking about that we used to receive a census of students as part of our report, and we would look at that frequently. And I looked at it frequently to see where we were in terms of the number of students who are on IEPs and across the different levels, elementary, middle, high, even grade by grade. And would it be possible to include something like that, maybe as an attachment to your report, like Mr. Perrier does, or Mr. Notorianni does with regard to technology? Because I think that would be helpful to see, because I know that we talk all the time about the percentage of students that are on I know that we talk all the time about the percentage of students that are on I E Ps, but I think it's helpful to see the actual hard numbers so people will understand where those students are coming from. Would it be possible to add that to your, your uh, school committee report?
Absolutely. I can run those, I can run those reports. I can absolutely submit that and I can do it um, level by level, pre-K, elementary, middle school, high and on transfer so that we know the breakdown. Um, we'll also do the out of district numbers as well if we needed that.
You also have, uh, those are in transition. You have uh, numbers for the, the students who are in the transition phase. And that would be a complete picture. This way we'll, we'll know where we're looking at. I think that'd be very helpful.
Perfect. I'll add that to the next um, update.
Next on, uh, any, any comments or questions for Ms. Morrell? Then I'll make a motion to receive on place on file, the special education update. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by, by Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus?
Yes.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Um, let's see, we do not have any unfinished business. Um, I'll make a motion to discuss the return in person, uh, school, for the school committee meetings. Is there a second for discussion only?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclerc and Ms. Costa. Yes, uh, we've, we discussed this last time, since we have uh, students in school. It's good that um, uh, we start thinking about going live at Hamlet. And I want to thank Mrs. Kepiscus and Mr. Leclerc for, for meeting with Dr. McGee and Mr. Notorianni to view the situation and maybe you can give us an update. I know there's another meeting scheduled for next week, so maybe you can let us know what's planned, at least at this point, uh, before we finalize what we're going to do for the next meeting. So I'll turn it over to any one of you. We'll start with Dr. McGee.
Sure. I, I would love to start. Um, so as you said, Mr. Chairman, uh, we met Mr. Leclerc, Mrs. Kepiscus, myself, Mr. Notorianni and Mr. Perrier met recently at Hamlet uh, middle school in the cafeteria to, you know, look at the uh, the setup and the potential setup for an in-person school committee um, meeting. We discussed the variety of things, um, from, you know, where the school committee would be seated, uh, where the directors would be seated, um, as well as, you know, the protocols that we would utilize for um, folks in the community to attend that meeting. Um, and if we, in a, in a situation where we exceeded capacity, which we don't anticipate we will, but if we did, we're, we were thinking about a, a contingency plan with respect to, you know, any, 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 any more people who would like to attend, who, who we can't fit in the um, in, in the cafeteria. But we, we, Mr. Notorianni was, was putting together, um, and I think Mr. Notorianni, I think he's, was, might have shared that with the committee. He did have uh, notes that he took from that, from that meeting. We discussed the fact that we would have the school committee return to the stage at least, you know, until things are back to more normal, um, than, than they, than they might be in, in the, in the next, you know, couple of weeks or so. Uh, we're, we're going to be meeting on Monday, May 3rd to uh, discuss more of the logistics, um, specific to the um, um, the, 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 the radio station W O N, which um, you know, which, which currently we, we use to um, to, to send the, the, the meetings out across the uh, the radio to um, to the, to the citizens of the city. So tho- those were the, the major things we talked about. I don't know, Al, if, if there are any specifics that maybe I missed that, um, that you included in the um, in the document that you put together.
I think that, that covered everything, Dr. McGee. We, we do have an in-person meeting with the technology and facility staff uh, tomorrow to meet directly with Mr. Richards, just to go over some of the technical aspects. Uh, but Dr. McGee is correct, on Monday, we, we will have a, a follow-up meeting with what we've worked out to make sure that everything will work properly for coming back in person. I did attach notes, they are in the folder, they're not linked to the agenda, but they are in-person school committee notes that you can read, the bulleted items, um, and I-
I've got them in front of me, so yes, I did receive those. I, I would imagine that, that the school committee, we want to be live. Uh, all of us want to be there. I mean, that's the example we want to give. Uh, because if we would not have had COVID, guess what? We would have been at Hamlet since the beginning of the year. So we want to be there. But the, to expand the audience, I mean, I, isn't there, have, have you discussed the possibility of having a Google setup for the audience? And I think we received something from Sarah or I got something from Kim from Sarah regarding uh, what's allowed? If you've got thi- this hybrid situation, am I mistaken?
Uh, so Mr. Chair, um, there was an inquiry that we made with the Attorney General regarding the O M A and the, any potential changes to the O M A that may continue in, into the future. The person with whom Ms. Cold spoke, who is uh, in charge of interpretations and issuance of advisory opinions, advised that having a sustained uh, virtual option is perfectly fine. Um, and that the public seems to be very grateful for access through the virtual medium. The problem that is not clear and to be addressed is how to uh, have a public in-person option that may be, that may include an overflow space. They're not sure how that would work. Um, people could complain that they are in person and have less access in the overflow space than in the immediate space. But having the virtual option into the foreseeable future seems to be uh, plausible and doable.
Have we uh, worked at, on that, Ms. Notorianni? Have you started thinking about that? I know, Dr. McGee, you had mentioned possibly using the gym, setting up additional chairs in the gym um, and making uh, what is the Google link available there? Uh, I don't know if you've talked about that in this last meeting of yours or that'll be next week's discussion.
So that's something we're going to discuss tomorrow when we have the technology portion of it, with the technology staff and, and Mr. Richards and how that would work. If we're going to continue to use a Google link, uh, my concern is just linking it up with the radio. Uh, more or less, if we're going to continue with the Google link, which I think is probably our best bet, we're going to more or less be operating in, in a virtual meeting where the school committee members would be present on the stage with their laptops, their Chromebooks and a Google link. But they'd also be present sitting next to each other. And the directors would be on the floor of the cafeteria and members of the public would be able to come into the cafeteria to participate. And then if it, it became a truly large crowd that needed to space out, they could then go into the, the gymnasium. We could have a setup there. I highly doubt we're going to have that type of an overflow. My understanding is, and coincidentally, a thread through the Technology Director Association that went out coincidentally yesterday, um, was discussing just this type of scenario, how it would work. And many districts that are doing the hybrid are doing exactly the way I've explained it. Where they have both the, the Google link and they have in-person. The feedback I've read so far indicated that they've had no one attend in-person. Specifically East Providence, which went hybrid a couple of meetings ago, ultimately made the decision to go back to just um, virtual because the only people that were present, aside from the school committee, was the technology staff and the facility staff. They weren't getting many, many people coming out to participate in the meeting in person. But I think, you know, when Sockit's not East Providence and we should give it our effort to see if we can do it in person if possible.
Yeah, I mean, generally when we were, we're in person at Hamlet, very, the only time we had a large, large attendance when we'd be giving awards or when the classrooms would come in to give a presentation. So you had the, the children, the teachers, their parents, but right after that presentation, uh, we had to get out of the way, cause uh, you know, everybody went to, for the doors and we were left with skeleton crew that was uh, abs- sitting in front of us, observing the meeting. Uh, I agree, in a normal circumstance, that's what's going to happen, I believe. I think it's only a couple of times when the, the school committee had, whether we were voting on uh, the homeschooling policy or some other major issue where we had quite a few people attend. But generally, it's been small numbers. But again, I, I, I guess as you discussed this over this week, next week, we'll be able to determine exactly how we want to proceed. But we should be considering uh, attending in person. Since we're requiring our teachers to be in person, we're requiring our students to come in full-time. Uh, but that'll be, that'll be, uh, we're looking forward to how we're going to handle that um, and see what we're going to do for next week. So I would imagine we'll, we'll hear uh, the results of the committee of, of, of this group that's investigating this situation, will decide what we're going to do for the next meeting. But it'll depend on what, what, you know, what makes sense, I think. I think that's the way to go. Any other comments on returning in person?
Mr. Chair, it's Lynn.
Mrs. Kepiscus?
I, I would, I would just like to suggest a couple of things with regard to the timeframe, because this is only on for discussion and, and our meeting was preliminary. Um, I would suggest that we might want to think about putting um, the proposal to return for discussion approval on our May 12th agenda, with the first in-person meeting being at the earliest May 26th. Because we have to discuss and approve it and, and we can't approve it tonight because it was on only for discussion purposes. That's the first thing. And the second thing is just to, for, so everyone can know that this currently, I had a bar meeting on um, on Wednesday. I'm on the Rhode Island Bar, House of Delegates. And there is legislation pending right now before the House and the Senate, pieces in both places, which would cause an extension of virtual meetings under the O M A at this point through July of 2023. So in the event we had to go back to virtual meetings, if either of these pass or if both of these pass, um, the option for virtual meetings would extend beyond the governor's executive orders. I don't know where they are right now. When I checked uh, their status this morning, they were still in committee. Um, but I know that there are two pending and uh, when someone required at the bar meeting as to what that's going to mean, essentially according to the legislation that's drafted, it's going to permit each municipality to make decisions on its own. So a municipality can decide to remain virtual, another municipality can decide to return to meetings or return to a hybrid schedule, just kind of what we're suggesting at this point. And, and on a personal note with regard to the hybrid, I think that um, with regard to the parent groups that I'm involved with, the, the, absolutely the hybrid, the virtual meetings are working much better in terms of attendance, particularly with regards to things like C L A C, where parents find it difficult to go out because they, it's hard to find childcare for children with special needs. C L A C plans to continue that way, but we're not subject to the O M A. Uh, something we didn't discuss on, on Monday that I would like to raise here and I would be raising again on, on Monday is whether or not subcommittees are going to return to an in-person format, whether they will remain virtual. Uh, I'm kind of thinking, because we ha- very rarely have members of the public at those subcommittee meetings, that it might make more sense to just leave those virtual as well. Because we're also getting better, better attendance at those and it's easier to attend those virtually. Uh, but we can certainly discuss that money and, and when it comes back up, um, before the full school committee, but I want to raise that now.
It's a good point, um, because I, I believe you're correct. I mean, C L A C is a great example of that in terms of uh, virtual meetings. I know uh, facilities has, has, that's been a, that's been very good. Uh, we've had good attendance virtually, so the other committees, I'm sure you're seeing more attendance. Uh, and it's easier to, to hold, um, and easier to put on the schedule. So certainly we will discuss that, but I think you're right. We'll put this on the next, uh, we'll put it on the agenda for our next meeting uh, to vote. Because now you all have had two meetings, uh, two, basically, uh, two meetings regarding in-person and uh, we'll, we'll, we'll discuss and vote on, as to what we want to do next time. Um, we should put more flesh to it in terms of especially thinking of overflow, not because we know we're going to have overflow, because typically we don't, but just in case. Um, and how is the radio and how, how will this all work out? Uh, because in the past, it was all, it was all radio. Uh, and frankly, uh, think about before COVID. We were, we were present, it was, it was a skeleton crew that was observing the meeting, that was, that was attending the meeting. And if you, you had to catch it on radio. Um, Estelle Bubble wasn't there all the time. Uh, she was there, uh, you know, what she does with the uh, city council, she uh, she records the city council meeting, so you can just go on YouTube and see it. But let's, let's see what happens uh, in the next, the next meeting. Put it on the agenda for a vote and then we'll decide exactly what we're going to do. And maybe the general assembly, Lynn, do you have any idea when they're voting on this? Or is this, it's just there? It's just uh, on their docket?
When I checked it this morning, both um, bills, both the House bill and the Senate bill were still in committee.
Okay, so that could take some-
Keep an eye on it. I'd be happy to check it again before our next meeting.
Sure, that's great. Any other comments regarding in-person? Okay?
That's the last one.
Uh, Ms. Ms. Costa?
Yes, I just, I would like to just add a comment that if, I mean, if, if it's more beneficial for people to attend virtually, then maybe we should lean that way. If we can make it work in person, I would love to, because I, I would actually love to meet everybody face to face, actually, and actually see everybody. It would actually be great. Um, but if we can't, like, if it's more beneficial that we have more people attending and more parents attending and virtually, and like you said, just us go into Hamlet and, and try to make it work that way, I, I think we could try to potentially make something work in that manner.
Yeah, there's a, there's a lot of factors, a lot of balls in the air at this point. And I'm sure it'll settle down within the next week and before the next school committee meeting, next regular meeting anyway. But you make a good point and that's exactly right. We want to get, try to get as many people attending one way or another. But it would be nice if we can basically show the flag and be in attendance since we're requiring now that all our students attend, come, come in person, but and it would love, it would love to meet you all too, in person instead of on a screen. Any other comments? Then I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Chairman, Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Ah, my shiver. No, got it.
I was just going to say ironically, our discussion for this particular item is the first time this evening I have heard the whole discussion. And the first time I have seen everybody's face through this evening. So I can't wait to be meeting live, because tonight's meeting was painful. Sometimes I, I couldn't be heard, sometimes I heard half of what people said. Thank God I read Mr. Perrier's report beforehand, because I only heard half of it. And uh, so ironically, our, our full, our discussion to go back to, to live, I say, you know, live from Wood Socket, it's uh, Wednesday night, I want to be there.
Then Mr. Burke will have you be the M C. How's that? You can give a monologue as well as the joke of the evening. How's that?
We can do that. We've done it before.
I'm sure you have. Uh, any other thoughts? Any other comments? Then again, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'm sorry, excuse me?
Who?
I've raised my hand. My name is Kristen Williams. I'm from Rivers Edge Arts.
Um.
I have a question. How do we ask questions?
Um, you can't ask a question in, in session, in open session. You would have had to do this in Good and Welfare.
I see. Thank you.
I make a motion to adjourn at 7:50 PM. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee roll call.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus?
Yes.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Thanks, everybody. Hopefully we'll see you later.
Good night.
Later. Good night, everybody.